The chairman shall, the chairman shall, if there are electors desiring admittance to the meeting who cannot be admitted because of the size of the meeting hall, all those people outside, immediately recess the meeting to a time as soon as practicable and to a place sufficiently large to accommodate at least the number of electors present at the time within the meeting hall and those outside the meeting hall desiring to be admitted. So I'm calling on you, Madam Clerk, in your capacity to recess this meeting.
Are you, excuse me, Dave?
We don't need that.
We didn't start yet.
She did. You called it.
She's called it to order.
Well, you're asking to move the meeting.
I'm not Illinois.
Recede.
The only reason most people are here is about the agenda item to transfer.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
They're here to conduct their business.
Women, one second, please. Let you talk, now let Steve talk.
If it's going to be removed and you guys want to have a different meeting somewhere else, the here it's going to get removed, it's fine. We only put it on there because that's the state law.
Wait a minute, he's now doing business. He's automatically removing this without a vote.
Yeah, right.
Someone's going to make a motion and everybody in this room.
No, I think the motion is going to be failed.
Make a motion to recess then.
I think the motion is going to fail.
Why don't you just give it a few minutes or do you want to just?
Because those people out there are not being accommodated.
They have a voice.
We called repeatedly saying there's going to be more than enough, more people in this room.
Let me stop you right there. No one called repeatedly. That is the line. It is a flat-out line.
Well.
So don't stop. Just stop.
But one of the messages that was given was we haven't had a lot of, we haven't had a lot of calls or emails about it. So it's kind of like, we do not need to call this administration or email this administration to come to a public business to watch our business be conducted.
One second. First of all, yes, I have spoken with the Attorney General. She told me if there was not a lot of people calling or emailing me to tell me they're coming to this meeting, that there is no reason.
It's over, the place.
Um, well, just right here.
Call for recess.
We're trying to get the recess.
Right. The motion stands for recess. Do you need a motion for a recess?
She doesn't even need a motion. You shall do this.
One second, please. Hi, right here. Forty-eight people. Yep. Forty-eight. So I, I, well.
There's got to be more than forty-eight.
I took the list when I was letting county people in. Then I stopped when I got to forty-eight. Um, probably not. But I could open up those two rooms, can we put them in there?
I thought that was the plan.
Maybe it was just this room.
Please, just this room.
Yeah.
We're moving the meeting. But we also have to get the people out of the meeting.
Well, now, they're going to move it. Depends what the occupancy is.
All right.
Can you find out what the occupancy is of that other room? Thank you, Mike. Truly noted.
Good coffee.
You always got to be there, though. You always got to be there with the camera.
I'm going to point my phone to his job.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
At least she said it to his face.
Oh, yeah?
Hold it back.
Oh, no?
Hold it back. We have Paul somewhere.
Keep in mind, he's not a township official. Nothing more.
Don't get angry. You've been hopeful here. Be angry. You're good, George. You can only offer four or five times. Quite a few people outside. No, I read that too. And I'm glad you said that. You shall. You shall.
We have seventy-two.
New townships. Everybody is out of township. But I think he's the D guy for the, from other one. Yes. All those people that got turned away, they're just not signing in.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm fine.
And they turn people away.
Yeah, they turn people away.
So first of all, let's all stand up, please, to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I get a motion to run the moderator?
Nominate Keith Gray.
I nominate George Euken. Nominate George Euken.
Keith Gray.
I nominate Keith Gray.
Okay, Keith Gray, second. One second.
George Euken, student.
I'll do Keith Gray first. And who was my first? Sorry.
Kurt Mason.
And who was my second? My second to that.
Demon and Y M A N. N Y M A N.
And now I have a motion for George Euken. Okay. And first is Steve Balich. Who do I have as a second for that? Brock. Are there any other nominations? Anybody else want to nominate anybody? Anybody in this room want to nominate anybody for the moderator? Anybody want to nominate?
There she is.
I found they two to be the moderator. All right, can I get a second?
Well, they put her behind the daughter.
She does. Second. Okay, so first we got Keith used to be Gray. All in favor of Keith Gray.
Clerk, can we see who is, who is the nominee? We couldn't hear what you were doing out there.
Okay.
So who are the three or four people that you picked out there?
Okay, the first one was Keith Gray, which everybody heard. The second was George Euken, which everybody heard. And the third was Sue Foster.
And I'd like to request a comment.
Okay, well, let's do the As and As and we'll see how that goes and then we can always do a county vote if necessary. I think that seems very fair. Okay, so all in favor of Keith Gray?
Aye.
And anybody opposed?
Yeah, I'm on George Euken.
Okay, so we got one opposed. Okay, so next will be George Euken. Uh, who is in favor of George Euken being the moderator?
Just me, I guess.
Okay, any As?
No hard feelings.
Any As? And then we have Sue Foster, who wanted to be the moderator.
Sue Foster never wanted to be the moderator.
Who is, who, any As for Sue Foster? Okay, she didn't accept the nomination. Okay, so we'll say did not accept. Okay. All right, so Keith Gray, Keith Gray, where do you go? You got the floor.
You want to swear?
Oh, my gosh. Excellent idea. Okay, Keith, sure, why don't you? I do solemn, I.
Keith Gray.
I, Keith Gray. Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of moderator.
Moderator.
At this town meeting.
At this town meeting.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, so why don't you do this and sign, please? Thanks, Keith. All right.
All right, good evening, everybody. Can everybody out there hear me? Relatively. Thank you all for coming. Obviously crowded room, couple of contentious things. Uh, the first order of business, we're going to set the date for the next annual town meeting. Uh, for April 7, 2026, a time to be determined. Is there a motion for that?
I'd like to make the time at 7:00 PM, please.
There's an, and an adjustment to that to make the time 7:00 PM. So we'll be motioning to set the date of the next annual town meeting for April 7, 2026 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Vicky Rosen first?
I'll second.
Can you give me a name on that, Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Anybody have any issues on that? All right, hearing none, can we call for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes of the annual town meeting held on April 9, 2024. They were on the table here, there were not enough copies for everybody in the room. Does anybody want a copy to peruse real quickly?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion then to approve the minutes from the annual town meeting held on April 9, 2024?
I'd like to amend the, the minutes.
Okay.
My first name is Brock, not Brent.
Okay, is that the only amendment?
That's the only one I saw.
Okay, uh, we'd like a motion to amend the minutes. Or I'm sorry, we'd like a second for that motion.
Second.
John Robinson, seconds. Any discussion on that? I do know Brock, his name is Brock, it isn't Brent. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number six. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, you are right. Uh, okay, now I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the amended minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Kurt and then Brock. Okay, is there any discussion about the amended minutes? I know he is Brock. Okay, hearing none.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
This, this, and I don't know if the next, uh, the unaudited equipment and building fund, it was not actually signed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're not on that part. Yeah, we're still, we're still doing the odd minutes, which I believe is odd number, item number five on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Is that all? Do you have anything about the minutes? Are you okay? Okay. Okay, we have the motion. There was no discussion. Uh, all in favor of approving the amended minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Now, number six. The presentation of the supervisor's annual financial statement, unaudited, for fiscal year ending March 31, 2025. Is there a motion? Okay, there's an amendment being proposed to the audited, uh, financial report?
My issue is it's not signed. Is that a concern?
You know what? I'm going to ask the attorney who's in the room with us, if you don't mind, sir.
That's the highway one on home, right? And they, I got, the, 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 he signed the other ones, but the highway ones that not.
Let me see a copy and I'll verify the numbers because I have a sign on.
Because these are the ones that we have or not. I'm sure somebody should be looking at those numbers also, if you have. It might not be signed here, but in the official packet that I put together for this.
Those are accurate. Thanks.
Does that answer your question, ma'am? Are you okay with that? Would you like to view the, the, uh?
No, I, I will take it, but I think that going forward. The official packet does have the to sign ones, which is, these are just copies, so. Yeah, but it needs to be noted for, because this is our annual meeting.
Okay, right. We'll put that as part of the motion then, that you want it to be only the signed minutes, or I'm sorry, the signed financial audit.
Should come out, because otherwise you don't know what draft it is.
Okay, are there any other amendments anybody like? On number six, the presentation of supervisor's annual financial statement? Anybody?
I have questions.
Question, please.
Eric, is he making any presentation or this is just the presentation?
I do not believe that he does. I don't believe historically that's happened.
Well, I have a question because the Open Space Fund says the amount received from all sources is $340,000, $917.47. And I thought I had heard that there was a $500,000 grant. Did we get a $500,000 grant?
During a meeting I'll talk to you about it. I, I'm not supposed to be answering questions.
Oh, is that it? So we can't ask?
Ask me that during our meeting.
So I, I thought that's what you did at a meeting.
If you'd like, you can take it up, the supervisor, in his other capacity, he'll make it during the.
Okay. We are just by standards at this meeting. Not in our official capacity at this meeting. So that's one question. Just to let you know, so.
Quiet, please, quiet, please. Thank you.
So then my other question was the amount expended for all purposes for the park fund was $510,000, uh, $510,818.99. And I'd like to know how that was spent when there's no parks.
Sue, can you speak up? There's people in the back there, they can't hear.
Stand up and speak up, please, or allow people on the other end. Okay, she's going to speak up.
Yeah, if I'm to accept this report, I just had some questions. The first question was, the Open Space Fund says the amount received from all sources was $340,000, $900, $340,917.47. And I thought I had heard that we got a $500,000 grant. So I just want to make sure that that's accurate. And then the other one is the park fund that says the amount expended for all purposes was $510,818.99. And we only have half a park. So I, I just like to know how that was expended. And I couldn't ask these questions beforehand because this was not published or available until we arrived at the meeting tonight. Thank you.
And again, just to clarify, the supervisor's not here in his supervisor role, so he's really not going to answer questions about that. It is your prerogative to vote no on this particular item then, if you don't want to accept that. If you think that these, these items should, should hold this up, then vote no. Or vote yes and on their word that those items are there, that the supervisor will address it, that the, the unaudited, uh, financial report is signed in the actual packet. So, yes, sir.
After this, I can address all the, all of them questions, Sue, but not here because it's, I don't, it's not on an agenda for that. I, I'll be breaking off.
No, it's not a break. It's hard to vote if you don't show the answer.
Actually, better than.
Sir, what would the consequence be of, of not approving?
I believe in my own, just, you know, my experience, uh, in, in government and stuff that, you know, I, I used to be on the, the village board, we are accepting an unaudited report. So basically, whether it's signed or not, whether the numbers jive or not, it's an unaudited report. So basically, it comes down to, this is what, and it says right on the front of it, I believe, it's been prepared by administrative staff. So it really comes down to, you're just taking their word that this is what they've done all year long. So whether you want to approve it or don't want to, it is an unaudited report. I mean, really, it would be great if we were, if, if we were looking at an audited report from a financial auditor, these things would not be an issue because income and expenses would balance. Uh, signatures would be there. So it's six of one, half dozen the other, but again, it is your prerogative to vote no.
Does it get audited at any point or not?
Um, it will not probably by this board because technically this board is, is going to be going, uh, out on, on May 19th of next year. And I just don't think there's probably enough time to have an audited one done. But, um, I think I can speak for the new incoming board that probably will be audited once in the future.
It's audited every year.
It's audited.
Our audit is actually online, if you like to look at it.
But one of the things that happens, this, this budget is what we're passing.
In your capacity or not in your capacity or don't?
No, the township board that exists right now is passing this budget, but the actual budget gets turned in in June, but the new board has to vote on it.
So you just talk about what you want, but not what anybody else wants.
The new board could change the budget.
Ma'am, did you have a question?
I just wanted to know when we can get an audited report.
Okay, I think that's what, uh, Mr. Ballis just said was, there is an audit.
We get an audit every year. So if you want to see the audit, we can get.
No, that line. No, but it's this one. Audit online. Look at that line.
If it's an audited one online, why isn't it here? What, not this? Is it typically, it's because it's annually, every year around the same time.
The audit is online. Okay, so.
So you complain if it's not online.
There's an audited, uh, financial report, uh, the budget online, so everybody can view that. So hearing the, the two, um, amendments for the signals, accepting, you know, making sure that the, it's signed in there, and then Sue's questions, which will be answered later. Are there any other issues with the unaudited financial?
Um, just to ask clarif, my question, the audit that's online, I assume that's from the previous year, is that correct? Not this year.
The fiscal year doesn't add to March 31st?
Right.
We can't do it in eight days.
I know, but I just wanted to make sure everyone for clarification, since you said it was online, this one is on the prior year.
Correct.
And when does it go audited?
This one.
I think this month sometime. I really can't remember right now, to be honest with you. I, I want to lie. It won't be audited, probably within a month or so, you know.
Okay.
You got to remember, yes, this is our due now, so a lot of these counties are busy. What? I'm sorry.
When it's my turn?
Go ahead, Tom.
Typically, at the town hall meeting, they're always unaudited up to this point. This is not uncustomary.
Okay, but these are my questions.
Here, I'm, it's my turn to talk, right? I just want to put the clarity out there because there, there seems to be, that there might be something going on. It is always unaudited up to this point for every town hall meeting that I've ever been to. And then it gets followed up with the audit, like Don was saying, it'll be followed up with that. So this is not uncustomary.
Okay, point taken. So again, are there any other amendments that people would like to see to the, uh, number six, the presentation of the supervisor's unaudited financial statement? Okay. Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the amended presentation of the supervisor's annual financial statement, unaudited for the fiscal year ending March 31, 2025, to make sure that the one that is in the packet has the signature. And, um, then I think your questions will be answered later. So is anybody willing to make that motion?
No.
Is anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Vicki makes the motion. Is there a second?
One second. Nine's right.
Brent, a second thing? Okay, um, I think we've discussed enough. I will ask, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of accepting the unaudited report with the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, say no?
No.
I believe the no's having, or is there any question on that vote? Would you like it, uh?
Just, just so everybody knows that because we're not doing that, we still have to, uh, now we have to start all over again with posting. So there's a lot more involved than people here think. That's why the unaudited is here. But that's okay because then this new board is probably going to have to have a special meeting because there won't be enough time between the meetings to get it all posted a second time. So they'll have to, uh, have two meetings before the end of June or the township will get no money. So that's, you know, that's part of what you're voting for. So we're not going to be able to get it posted and then another meeting in time so that they don't have to go through this problem. Because that's going to be a problem. Because if they don't get it done, they get in a, they get in on the 19th and they have to have it in by before the end of June. I don't know the exact date. I don't, it could be the, like, the 20th, a different number than, you know.
Well.
Now they're going to have to have two meetings if we bow.
Thank you for that. But the motion already has been defeated, so.
May I ask a question regarding this? So actually, what happens with this report, Steve, after, let's just say it were approved? Where does it go?
It goes to county. It's already been, I think.
So you're saying it goes to the county and no money would be realized by the township without it?
No.
I disagree.
Not this budget, the budget that the new board passes.
I disagree.
Well, it's, everyone voted no, so don't worry about it.
True. Okay, moving on. Item number seven on the agenda. Shall the residents of Homer Township have the township clerk sign resolution number HT 2025-0408-RES1 opposing township consolidation into county government?
I make a motion to table this to a future meeting?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Table, uh, by Don Melody and seconded by Kurt Mason.
Um, may I? With this table, you have to define what the table is.
Indefinitely.
Is it for a date indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
Or what time period? You can't just say you're going to table.
How would you like to table that, Mr. Melody?
Um, until June.
Got a date?
No.
You don't have to. Yes, you do.
I, if there's something that says I have to, I'd like to see it.
Don, you can do it indefinitely too, so you can do it at your discretion.
If you do it indefinitely, you can bring it back.
And when you're at your discretion?
Yeah, that's right.
There you go.
So don't.
Indefinitely. Definitely.
Okay, so Don Melody is making, Don Melody is making a motion to table it till indefinitely.
And I still second.
And Kurt Mason's still seconding that.
My bad.
Okay. Since there's no discussion on this, this is being tabled, we're voting on tabling this piece. So we are voting to table number seven. The, uh, to table the resolution number HT 2025-0408-RES1 opposing township consolidation into county government. Is there, we're, we're now going to vote on that. All those in favor of tabling the motion or the, the item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, can you reword that so the word indefinitely is in there? That's the way it was said.
Mr. Attorney? Since they just voted during, during, during the middle of a vote, right. During the middle of a vote, but I need to add in the word indefinitely. Do I rephrase the entire thing?
I think you should.
And ask for the ayes again?
I think you should.
Thank you. Okay, we're on number seven still.